Hi, good evening, everyone. I'll just need to order, I want to remind you that this is a formal city council meeting, which is different from the town halls and the workshops. Please keep your conversation to a fair minimum. If you need to go outside, step outside, make sure your phones are turned off, all electronic devices, except as authorized by state law, government code five five one point zero two three. Okay, let's do the pledges. We have a forum here this evening, only council member, then Dante is not present. City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice of this meeting was posted by two P M on Friday, July seventh.
Okay, great, thank you. Any public comments?
First up, we have Karen Trump.
Okay. You know the drill.
I'm Karen Trump, and I'm here to talk about the lithium ion battery storage plant that we're building there on the replat. First off, where do these batteries come from? They're going to come from all across the nation for me bikes and scooters. What kind of storage we provide? Well, it has to be kind of chilly, just so you know. We're in the desert. And he's expecting our wonderful power grid to hold up all the time. The U S S commodity flow survey, seventy million tons of class nine hazardous materials were transported to the U S in twenty seventeen. That's the last year they have. Wonder who was president. Anyway, other class nines are flammable, combustible, corrosive. That's C O two nitrogen, helium. April nineteenth, an explosion of batteries on fire in an Arizona storage facility injured eight firefighters. Lithium ion can experience thermal runaway, or they release very flammable hot toxic gas. I don't know if the Alpine Police Department is up to date on this stuff. And I'll leave you with a thought. March twenty twenty three, one battery from one e-bike in the Bronx destroyed a grocery store, a laundromat, had seven injuries, five firefighters, one E M S and one civilian. So the batteries, there are, let's see. These lithium ion batteries are to blame thirty fires in New York City this year alone. This is what we're getting into. I don't want this to be an underhanders. So I want to leave out, I want you to read up on it, people, because it's coming. We're going to have to do something with it. And if it gets out of control, I don't know, our department. Thank you for listening.
Any other public comments?
Yes, we have Mr. Guy Gilder. Can I actually make my comments before you vote on the action item? Yes. I think though, it's big pressure in people's minds, but it won't be so worn out.
What are our rates? So that, any other public comments?
That concludes for the.
So no presentations, recognitions, or proclamations. Public City Secretary stepped the timer for six minutes. So boards and commission updates, we are almost a hundred percent filled with our boards, which has happened in years, years, from what I've observed. Uh, we do have two positions available, or I'm not sure which boards, but we have two positions available.
And by three board.
Okay, all right. So if we can get those filled, we'll be at a hundred percent. So that's amazing. Thank you, everybody, for volunteering to serve. There is a section under the city website that is titled Mayor informational video series, correct? And so I've been putting in videos just to let everyone know different things. I'm posting them on Facebook, they're on the city website, how to do different things on the city website, stuff about short term rentals, anything that's current, I'm making videos on. So be sure to check that frequently. And then we're also working on streamlining the meetings to be conscientious of everyone's time. That's why I asked the city secretary to put six minutes on the timer, because we're going to limit reports, info discussion items, and city staff updates to six minutes. And then in September or October, after budget, all of that finalized, then the council's going to come back together to see what else we need to implement or what we need to change. Okay? So, yes, all right. No city attorney report, city manager report.
Um, so the first item on my report is the water issues and use of the additional wells. And we did get the M O U in place with the dotaries. I reached out to Jacob and Martin and the engineers we have on contract with the city to kind of come up with a game plan and a discussion of how we can move forward. Um, I had reached out to T C Q and talked to Vanessa, didn't write down her last name. Um, this is using, use of the daughter well is possible. Um, there is a long checklist, which does require an engineer design, design plan. So I'm speaking with her, I'm looking at the options and exemptions and the direction we wanted to go, um, or even examine, well, what could we do? I reached out to Jacob and Martin, and a new representative, Andy, um, came to Alpine just to sit down to visit, say, hey, what are you looking at? Brought our map, um, that they have on file. And we looked at the overall layout of the city and the wells and the pressure planes and understanding where the water's coming from. So the first thing we talked about was the use of the daughter well. Um, I'm forwarding them as much of the information that I have available, um, so that they can start looking at that. And they'll know pretty fast whether or not we don't need one of the exemptions or one of the designs, and then the project will stop. And it really will be dependent on how far we can get with it. The other one that we talked about was the Lewis test well. So this is a city well that was drilled to test. It's never been put into production, there's no equipment there. Um, this is another well possibility. Um, so we're going to go ahead and start looking into that one as well. And we're also going to revisit the timing of the two sides. So many moves before me, the city had spent a large sum of money to try and tie the two sides, the sunny Glen wells and the moose can well, so that the water can flow between the two, so that you have redundancy, if something happened, one side could support the other side. Um, when they initiated that project and they tried to put it into practice, apparently did more damage than good. Um, several lines are broken. And they call it water hammering, uh, where that pressure wasn't too much for the lines to handle. There currently is about a half a million dollars worth of equipment that hasn't been used. It's in a little shed, practically brand new. If we can't re-engineer and tie the two sides, I want to pull that equipment and use it somewhere else, so that it's not just sitting there going to waste. Um, so they're going to look at that as well. Step, I call it one A A A A. Um, in discussing all of our concerns with the sunny Glen wells and where we're at, prime example is this weekend with the two big water leaks out in that area. We're going to examine the lines from the actual well fills to the storage tanks to understand that water capacity and use to see if we don't have issues in that little area. We had two water leaks that's broken, um, did not impact the city, um, because we were able to isolate it, but we want to make sure that there's not something we're missing. Um, we did make a note that for the past two years, Pierce tank, which is the one up on the hill, actually has not been able to hold water. So they can fill it, and then it just all kind of drains out. Um, we, it drains back into the system. So we're going to look at that as well to see if there's a valve that's not working, something that was cut off. Um, by no means do we, we hope to find this unexplained tap. Um, but we really want to look at that, like we're starting, um, at the same time, working with the daughter as well. So I have gone into a task with them so that they can start focusing on that, utilizing a lot of the data we already have and be able to move forward with that. Um, the two wells, of course, are very hopeful. And then if we can tie the two, that would provide that redundancy that we need. Um, until then, we'll kind of have to wait and see. On the paving, um, the city did go out for a second R and B. Um, it was published in the paper, or it was advertised, it was on our city website, we got zero responses. Um, the city will not be paving this year. Um, and what that means is we will still be steel coating, so we'll still be maintaining several of the city blocks. We just won't be having a third party vendor come in and pull up the actual road and put down a new paving. The amount of time it takes to do an R and B, and these are state requirements for procurement, is four to six weeks. And so we are required to advertise the, this is the second go around, and we'll get some information. Um, the next item, um, is my version of the city attorney's report, only because Sylvia is back at the office as of yesterday. Um, she is currently one of the ones that will be serving the city, um, from the Bahorcas Law Firm. And Sylvia is online, I believe her last name is Rwanda. Did I say that right, Sylvia? Barunda?
That's correct, that's correct, thank you.
And currently, we have multiple things pending. Um, some of them are cleanup. We still have the A E P contract for the franchise fees. Um, we have the T D S, um, issues and conflicts that we needed to down and visit about with the attorney. Of course, we have ongoing board. Uh, we have the zoning and replating that we've been asking questions on. Um, we have several contracts that need to be put into place, including, um, one for the concrete and concrete pad services, because this one is tied to a federal grant, we want to make sure that we outline that one correctly, and we don't forget something that we were supposed to put in there again, but. Um, there is also the contract for the shared use of the neighborhood centers that the city has. We want to make sure that that was forwarded correctly and that all parties are in agreement. Um, those are the big ones I have currently. That doesn't mean that's the end of the list, because you and I, from day to day, have been like, oh, we need that from this. Um, I do anticipate that the first couple of months will be a little bit large, um, because we're going to ask for pretty much anything and everything to get us started. Uh, we do kind of have talked about having, if we have a sample contract, we ourselves can build upon it for other things, let's just have that for a simple contract. Are you talking about holding?
Mm-hmm.
So I find out this Friday, T M L is representing us for that one. So it's not one that I had issued to the.
Has all information been got, uh, received from previous city attorney?
We did receive a lot of the information, I can't tell you if it's all communication. Um, I'm, I mean, it's an honor system that he's provided, but we did receive a lot of information. A lot. They came in and dropped one. So it's all emails and everything. Um, the whole B K T M L is representing us, so I don't have it on their pending, because we can have representation, and I'll find out this Friday before we're out. It's still my fault.
So can we just get, just a list of, here's all the stuff that they ordered. Yeah, that'd be great.
Oh, F T Rs, thank you. Yeah, yeah.
That's just a lot easier for us. We can walk down, we got questions we can ask.
That's a great idea. So the first step is to get all the records cleared out. So we've got some on the move, so that the records, uh, and some of our staff can go through the chart. We have a lot of employees up there as well.
They're always going to ask me about the F T Rs, I had asked if that could be added to the list.
Yeah, so that is one of the things I'm, to go exactly where we're at and how, how to perform on. Availability and ability of what we need. And then accordingly. And then there's also the lots and ballots.
There's also a great fine or something. Yep, good. All right, any other questions? Okay, let's move on, no city staff updates. We're moving to public hearings, so if there is someone to speak on one of these, just a reminder that the council cannot respond or interact. So public hearing number one, public hearings of Texas, reviews and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh six dash oh one, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Alpine, Texas, authorizing the installation of additional four way stops, the intersections of Eighth Street and Soul Ross Avenue, the intersections of Eighth Street and Avenue A, the intersections of Seventh and Hendrix Avenue, and the intersections of Eighth Street and Del Rio Avenue. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Hey, come on up, sir. Be sure to state your name and your ward.
Well, I'm Brian Sugar, Ward one, six on six North Eighth Street. I want to talk about Eighth and Soul Ross. Um, perhaps six years or so ago, my wife was steaming there in total work car. Fortunately, she wasn't injured, but the line of sight was hindered. Uh, people speeding through there, and you're going north and south on Eighth, that's, you're, you're at a stop sign. But east west, there's no sign at all. And then I am concerned too, and I've witnessed this, American Legion has affairs during the winter when it gets dark early. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic. Um, I think if we had a four way stop there, that would mitigate the dangers to those pedestrians. Uh, for Avenue A and Eighth, I lived there. Uh, I've seen people teabowl. Uh, recently, we had, um, an individual traveling on Avenue A West Stings in the aisle. Uh, a lady driving north on Eighth had to swerve, she went through my neighbor's fence, knocked over two trees. Uh, he hit the telephone pole. Uh, neither one had a license or insurance, one didn't even have a license. Uh, and I fringed yesterday, I walk my dog through that area all the time, and it was a little kid. I bet he was seven years old on a little truck or bike. And he was coming through that on Avenue A, and I cranked, because I've heard people coming from the west side, they like Eighth Street because there are no stops. And boy, they, they really go down that street. Uh, plus, it's a block from the elementary school. We wouldn't get a lot of traffic, where parents dropping their kids off and picking them up in the afternoon. Uh, I think those people need to be slowed down with a four way stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing number two. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding replat twenty twenty three dash oh seven dash oh one, a replat to allow the applicant, Don Wagner, here of A M X Land Development LLC, to combine underlying lots into one to allow for the development. The property in question is located on Holland Avenue and Fifteenth Street, and legally described as the east part of Lot One, Two, and Three, and Block Six. Texas Attorney Higgins additions to town of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas. The parcel I D of the subject property is R one two A seven six. The record property owner is Glenn Short. The current zoning classification of the subject property is C two business district. And the replat is approved, and the zoning classification will remain C two business district. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, moving on to public hearing number three. Public hearing number three, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty three dash oh seven dash oh one, especially use permit to allow the applicant Alpine I S D to establish a daycare center. The property in question is located at seven oh four West Soul Ross Avenue, and legally described as Lots Six through Ten, Block One, Gillis Addition to the city of Alpine. The parcel I D of the subject property is R one oh four five zero. The record property owner is Alpine I S D and Trust. The current zoning classification of the subject property is R two. Two family districts, if the replat is approved, the zoning classification will remain R two, two family district. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing number four. City Secretary, would you read that one for us?
Public hearing number four is to thank citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty three oh seven oh two, a special use permit to allow the applicant Big Ben Collective LLC, D V A or Ringo Bar and Grill, to obtain an alcohol license, a last permit from the Texas Alcoholics Beverage Commission to operate a bar and grill. The property in question is located at one oh one West Avenue B. The record property owner is Datica Investments LLC. The parcel I D of the subject property is R one one eight eight six.
Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing number five, City Secretary.
Thank you. Public hearing number five is to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty three dash zero seven dash zero three. A short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established seventeen oh three East Gallego. The property owners of record are Rosalinda, Pionas, and Hesusita Gonzalez. The parcel I D of the subject property is one two seven four seven.
Is there anyone here to speak on this?
I guess, okay.
Come on up to the podium, please state your name and ward.
My name is, uh, Hesusita Gonzalez, I go by Suzie, and I think I'm in Ward two, right? Not sure, but that house is, uh, the short term rental that we want to do belongs to my dad, he passed away. But we're trying to sell it, and I know that Alpine is bought with S T Rs, but this is not a long term thing, but I just wanted to make people, let's say.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda consists of eight items. Item one, approval of June twentieth, twenty twenty three, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of June twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, budget workshop meeting minutes. Item three, approval of the appointment of Tom Griffiths to the place three position of planning and zoning commission. Item four, approval of the appointment of Luis Gomez to the place seven position on the Parks and Recreation Board. Item five, approval of special use permit twenty twenty three dash zero seven dash zero three, a short term rental special use permit allowing short term rental to be established seventeen oh three East Gallego. The property owners of record are Rosalinda Pionas and Hesusita Gonzalez. The parcel I D of the subject property is one two seven four seven. Item six is approval of final city attorney invoice from Rod Quentin. Item seven is approval of June city attorney invoice from Bahorcas Law Firm. Um, item eight is approval of third quarter twenty twenty two dash twenty twenty three investment report.
Okay, I need a motion. I need a second. Okay, let's vote, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, passage unanimously, consent agenda is approved. Okay, now we're moving on to information or discussion items. City Secretary, please set the timer. Emergent air, come on up.
My name is Walter Kurt, program director for Emergent Air. I recorded your report. And we're looking, fully small in my home. We don't have time to. And you guys got yours, okay. Yeah, full number of calls for this quarter is three hundred and fifty eight. Full number of trauma calls is fifty adult, uh, three pediatric. Number five, we called two hundred and twenty eight adult, nine pediatric. Response time in the city is nine point nine nine. Scene time is one point six eight buildings minutes. Um, dead on scene was three. Total amount of times a secondary truck is called in is sixty one. The number of times it was in gospers, well, the use of air ambulance, whether it be ours or somebody else's, I think, I was arguing once and every character twice. Um, the stream, stat says eighty five percent, I left that on there because, um, I gave access to the different, uh, dispatches to our staffing, um, software. But they can see that, but what we have done is it's been, there was one day that we didn't have a second truck. Uh, it was backfilled with our flight team, uh, which has a flight paramedic, which is. We don't definitely, probably, if we get air and ground, they're all. Uh, update on our S D eight, uh, the people that were getting their license, they will be coming on board, I believe, in about one month or half. Um, at this point, we have got the ability to use them as drivers. They're only going to use those that are going to the class. And that's what the variance from the state. Again, there are people who are already committed to us through the S D eight for a year, and then we'll start their services.
We explain that program for the empty council members who are more.
Sure. So Senate Bill eight was a, was a program, and I guess the easiest way to describe it is, um, put, um, butts in seats of ambulance. So they will pay for whatever level, um, but, but for what we're doing is the basic level, to give people, um, license at the basic level. Uh, or, or they, they can upgrade their licenses also, or you apply through the R A P, or which is our regional advisory council, which is governed by the state. Uh, and then the funds are administered, uh, what it is, is it paid for upfront, before they start their class, they're paid for. And then after that, at the basic level, they have one year, uh, that they would, that they would work for the service that sponsors. Uh, what this does is ask to get transport ambulance service, uh, that are the only people that get sponsored. So if a fire department has a transport ambulance service, that's great, but trying to cut off fire departments that just would, would use that sponsor, which has separate, this is pretty specific, EMS and, and assisting with, in the staff. Is that, that's what we're doing. Five other people, four still in it. But then they're committed to one year of, um, one by us, uh, by their sponsoring service, and then I have like four L houses that are doing it here in Alpine, and four in. And I'm also going to be doing a lot really, they did their tennis this weekend.
What's the difference between a medical call and a trauma call, really draw the line, because anyone calls an ambulance is trauma.
Oh, sure, it's traumatic. I like to play, I guess, uh, but, but what we, what we differentiate is an assault to the body, or an incident where you are injured, would be classified as trauma. And then medical is anything else, full, pardon, restory issues. You know, you got restory issues, that can break your head, that's a. But that, that's how we differentiate.
Any other question? We also have.
We are. This, this is a busy time of year, doesn't seem like a far. Our numbers haven't picked up a, a, a lot more on, for the quarter, but they have picked up, and, and it seems like we're busier. Um, just, uh, this is our first bill. We have, we have, uh, here's a date, uh, for past year, year over year, uh, information, past year, we were brand new. So now we can see that it's, it's jumped quite a bit, uh, with the tourist season starting.
Dr. Glad, did you know this?
Yeah, uh, you know, a couple of years ago, there were two flight companies, and I was keeping track of it, and then one bought the other. So anybody that signed up would automatically get in care of. And now I've just heard of you just a few weeks ago, and so do you sell land insurance?
We, we are in the process of, uh, I saw the final draft of the, of the brochure. Uh, and I believe all I need to do now is send it out. Again, this is taking seconds, six months, eight months, to, to get it in place, uh, because you have to make sure that you don't cross any kind of legal lines, uh, that you become my pension, because it's a subscription service. So we've had to be very careful, we hired a company out of Florida that does that, to make, and they specifically operate in Texas to help, um, help us establish that, so you'll have the flyers, and then you also have the ability to access it one way.
What's the?
And that would be for ground and air.
What, um? What percentage of flights are now, with the old service or the established service in your service?
I don't know the numbers that they, that they do. I'm not a good idea, because we transport them, but, but again, I don't know who's who, because they have other services coming in, C S I, which is out of Bimbin', um, and then they have other aircraft coming in. So it, it's hard for me to, to say the numbers that they're putting up are smart.
Wait, are we going to have to get a subscription to you, you have a third company, is that what you're telling us?
No, sir. Uh, we, we're the only two that are, are here.
I was going to say, would you like to?
Let's move, yeah, let's move in. Thank you.
Actually, I have a question about it, because, right, you're making a citizen, Dr. Black just asked.
Okay.
You have an injury, you go to a hospital, you got insurance. At this point, you're going to have to both of them, or is the patient going to select which air ambulance service they want to use?
Uh, they could currently select right now, and they do.
Okay, so that's an important element, so that.
Okay.
Now, they, they could select, but it, so, so here, here's where the state kind of came across. Um, you can select, but you can't delay. If you need treatment, you can't wait for an aircraft. If you need treatment, you can't wait for an aircraft to come from Dallas for, for your, for your subscription service. When we did have that, because we had people going in to places they didn't exist, and they were selling their ins, their subscription service. And they were selling it, and they're like, well, I don't wanna go with that, and it was causing people to extend their entries like cardiac and stroke. To the point where I was on GTEC at that point, where we had to kind of put out a white paper on that.
So, yeah, so just think about seventeen thousand people in the Tri-Tan area that use this hospital. You guys are gonna have to talk about how that works, because right now, people are gonna be very confused.
Sure, and, and, yeah, my plan is, well
You, you guys gotta work together.
Yeah, no, no, and, and you work very well with Bobby. We've been having good friends for a long time.
We'll talk to Bobby, sort it out, so that we, to our users, it's easy for us to understand.
Yeah, ultimately, the easiest thing is if we approve it, accept either or.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
But again, I gotta know the legality of that. For us, we're fine.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to item number two, Alpine Volunteer Fire Department.
I'm on Zoom. Hello. Can y'all hear me? Okay, excellent. Um, so I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it in today, but I wanted to cover our quarterly report for y'all and give you all information on what we've been doing. Um, so, uh, the first deal we had is, uh, we have had quite a uptick in brush fires this past couple quarters, and we've been having a enhanced response to that by having our tanker on standby for anything that doesn't sound incredibly major. We've got all of our brush trucks going to try and stop. We've got a, a very strong attack method right now of getting in there and stopping the fire before it can make headway and turn into any kind of disaster. We've been able to stop several pretty significant brush fires the past, uh, past quarter. Thanks to the training we've been doing and, and our response to this enhanced fire weather we're having. So, um, we would also like to thank the community as well as multiple businesses. I tried to put together a list, it was, it was, it, it was very long. Of all the people who have donated waters and sports drinks like Gatorades, Powerades to the department, that has been beyond beneficial to our, our people out there in the field with this triple digit heat, working on the side of the roadway is, is wearing down a lot of our people. I also wanted to mention that we've got a lot of our new structure gear in. We are about halfway on new structure gear. We're hoping to, I've got a meeting with Deco Fire out of Lubbock. They will be talking to us and getting the rest of our structural fire gear. After we get that, we do plan on moving to brush fire gear. However, our brush gear is still good, our structural gear was out of, out of date, so we needed to work on getting that replaced as soon as possible, and luckily, a lot of things have come through where we were able to do that. We were also at standby at the Coconut Park for Independence Day. I know a lot of people were very concerned about the fireworks. We go out there, we monitor the entire discharge of all of the fireworks. We spray down the trailer, underneath the trailer. We followed it to the dumpster, sprayed the dumpster that the firework display went into. And then myself and my assistant chief, Charles Warden, spent about thirty minutes to an hour driving around different section of town, checking, making sure dumpsters were fine, making sure there was no fire hazards. So we took, we take Fourth of July very seriously, especially in fire weather. We did not have any incidents. And we were able, thanks to Kiwanis, to have a fundraising table where we sold hot dogs and sausages for a very low price to the community to help give back and, and get some people some food for Fourth of July. So moving on, I'm gonna touch on a couple of our notable calls. Sunny Glen in seventeen oh eight, we had a fire. This was right past the big curve, right at the edge. This was a very fast moving fire with a lot of heavy smoke moving towards a residence. I made the request to marathon fire. Luckily, my crew was able to get in there as well as community members and businesses with dirt trucks and and water tenders to stop this fire. We made a fire break right in front of the house. We were able to save it afterwards. We went and talked to the homeowner, checked the house for any kind of damage. Things went very well there, and we're very grateful for the help we had. So moving on to our next call, it is another brush fire. We, it was a fire started on the roadway by Big Hill. Many of you probably saw that after it happened. This seemed to be another accidental fire started right on the side of the road. This was another one that was encroaching on a pretty significant property very quickly. We were able to stop it, and we got in, took down the head, and we were able to get it mopped up and and with minimal loss of property or any equipment. And we appreciate the university police and Brewster County for providing traffic control out there for our guys, because it was, it was a back and forth going through the different entrances to try and make it into this fire. So here is a picture of our brush gear that, or I'm sorry, our structure gear that has come in. That is the gear that we will wear going into any kind of immediately dangerous to life and health environment. So any kind of structure fire, vehicle fire, anything where we've got the chance to be exposed to dangerous chemicals, high heat, yeah, anything that could put any of our guys in jeopardy, that is a catchall to save, save everyone. These are supplied by Deco Fire Supply out of Lubbock. We've been doing business with them since I started talking to them last year. They've been a very great help in getting us a very good price on equipment that meets or exceeds our expectations. And we do have, as I said earlier, more on the way with hopefully the whole department outfitted before the end of the summer with brand new gear. Moving on, something I'd like to cover now is notable training. We went over SCBA conditioning, which SCBA is self-contained breathing apparatus. That is the air pack that you'll see firefighters have on their back when they go into houses or they go fighting a fire. We'll have that on with our mask. For anyone curious, it is just purified air in there. There's no oxygen, since oxygen is flammable. So we did a SCBA conditioning program. We came up with a program where these firefighters can get conditioned to breathing on the device under stress, heat, and load, which is the same aspects that you would be going under in a, in a real scenario. And since the way that these masks work, it's a negative pressure, so when you wanna breathe, it's not breathing normal air like on demand, you've gotta breathe, and then there's a delay till it comes to you, so that can be very jarring for a lot of people. So we're working on a conditioning program so people can make their air last longer when they're on it, and they can be more effective on air. And that's something that we have been using some notes from Teaks on to incorporate with our current training so that all of our people can work up and, and exceed in these different levels of firefighting, these different aspects. So future plans, we have a plan to upkeep our emergency lighting. We were able to get our tanker truck back to a hundred percent emergency lighting. And the brush trucks, we, we plan on adding some additional lighting for safety. We noticed just some things while we were operating at night. Yes.
Okay.
You were past your sixth minute, we have extended for four, so go ahead and just give us the important details now.
Okay, excellent. So if you wanna move down to the call breakdown, I'll finish up here. So our city calls were eleven calls in total for this quarter. County calls were thirty three. We had a total of zero structure fires this quarter. Thank God, we had twenty three brush fires. Four motor vehicle collisions and seventeen miscellaneous fires slash rescues. That could be anything from assisting EMS to a lift assist to a fire being requested for standby. All those items are taken into account into that category.
Okay, thank you. Let's open up to any questions.
So the question I have, and I'm glad the judge is here. Even if we now have a board overriding oversight, what's the plan going forward relative to reports, getting feedback from them? So as council, we're up to speed, and we understand what's going on with the fire department at the same time with the oversight of the board. Do we have plans for that?
So actually, the board is in effect right now, and after this fiscal year, the board will report to it.
So that'll be at the beginning of the fiscal year?
Yeah, so we're finishing this fiscal year off, asking off every building that needs to be done, try to get them fully functional and running. And then moving forward, Andrew will report to them, and then they will give our
Okay, but they're still under the control of the board right now?
There aren't, yes. They just initiated, so this quarter report is important because of what the board is, and they've had two meetings.
Yeah, so, so I, you know, on one hand, there's the board responsibility, then there's every stuff. Like, the chart that was just sent, there's the calls and all that, which is of interest, so we're gonna get that as well.
That's the communication and the cooperation, Senator, with the board.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think, I think what you're gonna see is I mean, the chief will continue to report, because he's in charge of operations, you'll see the chief will continue to report his numbers as part of coordination. The board's probably, we talk to you mostly about fiscal responsibility and sort of policy and procedures. So the chief, I can see, will continue to tell you about the day-to-day grinding and firefighting.
Alright, any other questions for Andrew? Alright, alright, thank you very much, Andrew. We appreciate your report.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to information discussion, item number three, Councilmember Stephen.
Yeah, so Megan and I, that's me, that's back and forth, you know, part of the concern, I think, from a budget standpoint or from an operation standpoint. We know we have water challenges, we know we have wastewater challenges, so we I would suggest, Megan, sometime during the budget process, we probably have a workshop just on water and wastewater. What's the status, what's going on? I think it's probably an hour or two for each topic to include where all the wells, what our issues are. We get into technical discussion, you walk through about feeding the east side, the west side. And I think in terms of the wastewater treatment plant, and I've been out there myself yesterday. You know, really be helpful that we understand your perspective, can ask questions, you probably or whatever, but
Anybody else? Alright, let's move on to action items. Action item number one, city manager.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero six dash zero one. An ordinance of the city council, city of Alpine, Texas, authorizing installation of additional four-way stop signs at the intersections of Eighth Street and Solot Avenue, the intersections of Eighth Street and Avenue A, the intersections of Seventh and Hendrix Avenue, and the intersections of Eighth Street and Del Rio Avenue.
Any emotion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I need a second. Second, discussion.
I'd just like to say that I started all this, because Ms. Bushugar caught me on the street one day and said, can you put a stop sign there? So I called to Daryl, and Daryl went, so there you go, that's how you're hit. Everything ended quite that evening.
Alright, any other discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Hannah's. Thanks for getting those stop signs, good deal. Alright, action item number two, city manager.
Approve resolution twenty twenty three dash zero seven dash zero one, a resolution of the city of, city council of the city of Alpine, Texas, authorizing the city to participate in the Texas Department of Transportation Aviation Grant Program for the creation of an airport layout plan to provide short and long-term objectives for the Alpine Disparis Missable Airport.
Any emotion? I need a second, how's that? Any discussion?
So another question I have is, this says we have the money in this year's budget. Is that true? Was, just trying to understand this.
So, yes, so the anticipates that we were gonna actually do it this year, because they're dependent on funding as well, it's been pushed to the next fiscal year. It's the twenty plus thousand that is in the reserves, who's gonna use it? And so it's not being moved out of reserves, it's still there, but that's where the
Question, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, we've been doing this for a long time.
So we've asked for this since two thousand eighteen.
Yes.
How long, how long is this one? We said it was two years on that plan, so I
So it'd be from five to ten, depending on how much is in it. And if you notice the layout handling booth, I listed every option they provided you.
Yeah, and I would just tell you, I actually had one of my daughters, who's an architect, do an airport layout plan before, because we've not had one of these before, so it's nice to see this here.
And a Texas aviation board would have accepted them.
Yeah, so, okay. Yeah, we should be over at this time.
Any other Alright, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passage unanimous. So we've authorized the Texas Department of Transportation Aviation Grant Program. Very good. Alright, moving on to action item number three, city manager.
Approve replat twenty twenty three dash zero seven dash zero one. A replat to allow the applicant John Wagner and XX Land Development LLC to combine underlying lots into one to allow for development. The property in question is located on Holland Avenue and Fifteenth Street, and legally described as the east part of Lot One, Two, and Three, and Block Six of the Thomas Turner Hagan addition to the town of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas. The parcel ID of the subject property is R one two X seven, R one two eight seven six. The record property owner is Lynn Short. The current zoning classification of the subject property is C two business district. If the replat is approved, the zoning classification will remain C two business district. The planning and zoning commission has recommended the now of this replat.
Any emotion?
We do have a public comment.
Yeah, I recommend we accept the public comment.
Before the motion? Sure, okay, come on up. Be sure to state your name and
Everybody here knows me.
Name is Mike Fielder, I live in Ward Five. I have some background in batteries. Batteries, the way batteries work, when you put a load on them, chemical reaction occurs, and that chemical reaction produces When you wanna recharge the battery, you elevate the voltage, and you reverse the chemical reaction and chemical separately. They have electronics and they have intelligence that monitors this. And I'm sure, and I honestly believe, that the people that wanna put in a battery farm, allegedly believe that they've got the best safety system in place. But I will point out that NASA had triple redundancy, and Columbia shoves two exploding. Down the chemical had double redundancy, and they still had a mechanical failure that released poisonous gas, killed hundreds of people in both Thousands. In where? Thousands. Okay, but this particular technology, if it's lit, and if something malfunctions and goes wrong, I think there's a hundred possible toxic gases that could be released. And they're not necessarily carcinogenic, because if you're exposed, you're not gonna live long enough for cancer to be a problem. Okay, and so, I believe this is in a residential area, I believe it's zoned as a C two, so I would just tell you, oh, it's also a chemical fire, if it does catch fire, and you don't treat that with water, and I don't think our, our department is currently prepared to deal with the kind of fire that this is. So, I wholeheartedly support allowing this gentleman to rezone. But I wholeheartedly oppose putting a battery farm in that particular passion. I wouldn't if it were me and me alone, I wouldn't allow a battery farm within five miles of citizens. Just like I wouldn't put a propane storage farm in the middle of a residential area. Same reason. So, any questions?
Right, may I have a motion? I need a second.
I'll make a second.
Okay, discussion.
I, I do wanna point out before you have the complete discussion, that the city is required to approve replat if they have met all of our conditions for replying. This application has met all of our conditions for replying. You are not approving any type of zoning tonight, you're only approving the replat.
And so to that point, the resolution, I believe, should read. Texas Governor, quote, two one two dot zero zero five. As opposed to zero zero, so it provides, it's not happening. Just apply. Okay, so that's just a technical line of magic along, you know, so it's two zero zero states. What we're supposed to do, but you know. We have, we cannot have, we're reporting else. The question is answered. And all the departments setting to the replats, we cannot stop that. We're not changing the result. And looking at presuming laws. Now, this is a C two property. And the C two property has a whole list of things that are on here, which are more in light with commercial. This, in my view, if we were. If this was in M one, so. And it'd be appropriate, this is my M one, this is C two.
So it'd have to be resolved. So to in order to have that.
To follow up on that, and they have been notified, unfortunate communication from the beginning of this project. And they have been notified recently that they would have to rezone to an industrial in one. At three forty four P M. Today, the city received the following. From John Wagner, they will not be moving forward.
So do they want to continue with replat?
All right, any other discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. The replat passage unanimously. All right, moving on to action item number four, city manager.
Approved special use permit twenty twenty three dash zero seven dash zero one, a special use permit to allow the applicant Alpine Independent School District. To establish a daycare center. The property in question is located at seven oh four West Hall Ross Avenue, and legally described as block six through ten, block I, Gilas Edition to the city of Alpine. The parcel ID of the subject property is R one zero four five zero. The record property owner is Alpine Independent School District in trust. The current zoning classification of the subject property is R two, two family district. If the replat is approved, the zoning classification will remain R two, two family district.
Okay, any emotion? Need a second? Discussion, please.
Discussion I would have. Do I need to recuse myself on this one?
Governor Paul. Okay, Sylvia?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Councilmember Nance is an employee of Alpine ISD, and we're on an action item to approve a daycare facility. Should he recuse himself?
He should probably recuse himself just for for all the appearance, any appearance of impropriety, even though he. Probably legally doesn't have a conflict, but it's probably just a good practice. And you've got a full quorum there, so you don't have a problem with with getting the votes to move. So. I would recommend in the abundance of caution to go ahead and recuse himself.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I believe the chief governance officer, city secretary, will have a big word to decide at the end of this meeting. Okay, any other discussion? Let's vote. Councilmember Nance has recused himself. All in favor, raise your right hand. They passage unanimously with Councilmember Nance abstaining. All right, daycare kind of good deal. Action item number five, city manager.
Approved special use permit twenty twenty three dash zero seven dash zero two, a special use permit to allow the applicant. Big Ben Collective LLC, doing business at Old Ringo Bar and Grill. To obtain alcohol license permit from the Texas Alcoholics Beverage Commission to operate a bar and grill. The property in question is located at one oh one West Avenue B. The record property owner is Danica Investment LLC. The parcel ID of the subject property is R one one eight eight six.
Any emotion? I need a second. Discussion.
Just want to.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Passage unanimously.
Exactly, Elise.
All right, so we're moving on to item number ten, Councilmember. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Starks. Even though we were here at three. All right, Councilmember Rodriguez, next round. Thank you all for coming out. But we continue. Councilmember Nance. That's more serious.
Oh, yeah, thanks for coming. We got a busy July and August in front of us. We're looking at the budget process, so. We will be back here again next. We'll be.
Hope to see y'all. So that's what I wanted to say too. I wanted to thank you guys. I wanted to thank you for your comments. Or your expertise, or asking questions. Especially about the air ambulance. I know there's a lot of confusion about that. It's quite an expensive ride. If you have insurance, you might. So thank you all. All right, let's adjourn.